All right, Commissioner Pashon, you have the floor.
Thank you. The overwhelming number of objections really have been to the effect of the NRO on a single-family residential neighborhood. Personally, I agree with that. Unfortunately, it's been existing, but I think what this hopefully does for our city is it starts a dialogue about the NRO isn't one-size-fits-all. There's underlying zoning districts that are more appropriate to six-story buildings than not, or to nine-story buildings than not, and we've got this one-size-fits-all. If you're in the NRO, it almost doesn't matter what the underlying zoning is, and that's just not correct. Now, having said that, what do we do with this project? At the end of the day, you can still only put five pounds of water, or five gallons of water, in a five-gallon pail, and I think we're trying to put too much water in this pail. We talked about the project could be larger, and I don't think it could be because you couldn't accommodate everything that needs to be done for a larger project. The architect said if he had an acre and a quarter, or an acre and a half, things would be much better. He doesn't have a quarter, another half-acre of land. I've heard, the parking to me is a gigantic problem when you put a tall building in a residential neighborhood because 100 percent, 100 percent of the overflow goes into the residential neighborhood. I've heard that we've met all the standards. Well, 1.5 parking spaces per unit is the standard, and 5 percent for guests, and I think personally that's inadequate, and I hope we get to discuss that soon. But then we've taken discounts from that, and the discount, the problem with the discount is where do those people go? I can get lectured on the multimodal transportation that exists, and that's fine, I'll listen to that, but you've got $250,000 condominium projects, which strikes me as two incomes, two jobs, two cars. So, I've got, I've got full-time employees that work there. I don't know where the full-time employees work. There's no public parking nearby. July in Miami is not a time to be walking six blocks to go get your car every day when you go to work. The discount, we've taken the discount down to 90 parking spaces, and the architect's been doing a great job. I think he's doing a great, but I think he's trying to put lipstick on the pig because he keeps trying to find more parking spaces, and I think he's doing a wonderful job of trying, but we're up to 96, which is still 10 percent less than the non-discounted code requires, and I think the code is light. Then, there's tandem parking, I spoke to that earlier, but that takes 13 more parking spaces out of the general population. Then there's four handicap spaces. That takes four more spaces out of the general population. So now we start with 10 percent less, then we take 13 and four more. This place doesn't hold 67 units. Whatever we've got to do, I don't know what we've got to do, but I object to the dense, the purpose of us being here, I object to the bonus, because I don't think this property is entitled to the bonus.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, hold it.
I don't think it will accommodate the units that are being granted by the bonus. So, I don't, I don't have any questions for anybody, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, so now, we've had a fair amount of discussion and issues raised. As the chair, speaking for myself, I, on the one hand, I'm very much impressed with the developer and their willingness to continually meet the objections to the parcel and work to make it better. I have to say, in 28 years on this commission, I've never met a developer who desired to be more accommodating than this one, and that's god-awful encouraging. I like Mr. Reach's position relative to the swimming pool. Yes, I think it absolutely ought to be on the roof, and there should be a rooftop garden that would greatly enhance the value of these units. I also side with Mr. Pashon in that if we grant these, these extra units, the parking is not going to be sufficient. There's no provision, adequate provision, for guest parking, in part because the city has no commercial lots in the area that could absorb the employee parking and the visitor parking. City is, over the years, not sought to build parking lots that would accommodate these kinds of developments. We want the developments, so we get the tax money, so maybe we'll build a parking lot somewhere else, and, you know, somehow this has to go hand in glove, and I, I'm not quite seeing the hand in glove working too well here. As to the building itself, I think it's a very fine project, and I accept the developer's statement that they're not done with it yet. I acknowledge here that the builder, I think, slipped up in terms of trying to get email addresses, because frankly, homeowners have a natural distrust of anyone who wants to do something next door to them. They're not going to give out their email, so there'll be no way to communicate, and then they can come and say, "Well, I didn't know." Well, because you didn't let them know. On the other side of the coin, there's nothing to stop the developer from going into the property records, since they can get the overview and get all the lot numbers and send out a mailing, and of course, if the people don't happen to open their envelope, I can't help that, but at least it went mailed out. And it's also really cheap to print a pretty flyer and pay somebody to deliver the flyer to every house in the affected area. That's not very expensive, and so, the reliance on electronic mail, we're not there yet. And to say that's what you offered, that's really not good enough, and that's in part because of a trust issue. Frankly, nobody trusts anybody, and so, you know, I, you'd have to go back and do it kind of the snail-mail way. I would both have flyers hand-delivered for a future meeting, and I would mail them out, so that one way or the other, you know, every house got notification. I'm one of the few people, I admit, who's very public about my email address. I even post it in my office, so if my employees want to get me after hours, it's right there in the label, just read it, you know, but I'm a rarity in the use of email. I don't have anything in particular that anybody can take from me, so it isn't going to matter to me one way or the other. And we're now in a situation where we need to take a vote that would result in a recommendation, and I want the public to understand that the planning commission neither grants or denies. We make a recommendation, and that's all it is. The final decision, as always, sits with the city council. This is not a zoning change, this is merely a recommendation. It can go either way, and no matter what we do, when it goes to council, it's an entirely different issue. And so you all need to be painfully aware of that, and you also need to quiz the city on the design review committee process, so that as this goes through the stages, no matter what happens here, and I believe this project will ultimately go forward, one way or the other, you have to be part of that process, and I hope you'll all pay attention to that. So at this time, the chair is ready to seek the will of this commission, whether yea or nay. Mr. Reach?
Well, before we get to that, I'd like to make certain stipulations.
Can?
If this does pass...
And that's an if.
Number one, we've got to increase the parking within the building. Okay, number two, that the landscaping is totally inadequate, especially between 129th Street, those four houses back there, that the pool, the pool gets moved to the roof. Under no, no, no can, way would that pool stay where it's at. Make a rooftop garden, put a pool up there. Don't have the lights going into the, into the R1 district, where the lights are below the roof line. Can you do that? Okay, I, I mean, the park, the parking's the big issue, landscaping, the setback. If you have to go another story higher, you go another story higher to get more parking. I, I mean, how, how far out would you put your footprint if you had to go another story? You said you had a setback, but we're looking at parking, to me, it seems like a relatively simple issue to solve.
Well, it's not, it's not simple, unfortunately, but it's doable. We would have to meet, we'd have to come all the way to the setback.
Why would you have to, if you're going higher, just for parking, why would you have to?
Because you have to drag, you have to come up a ramp, you have to go down the aisle, and you have to come around. You have to, I mean, you have to have an entrance and an exit. That's the only way, because this is a speed ramp, because of the way this, the ramp would come, we've already drawn it, the ramp would come up here, it would come around to here, and you would park in here, in the stalls, and you could just see it. I mean, if you look at the ground floor, take that ground floor and put it on, on the second floor. So basically, your parking would be all the way up to here. Not impossible, very doable, but I'm, you asked me a question, I'm explaining it to you.
Seems to me that if I'm going higher, I don't have to go wider. I'm not an engineer.
Well, we could, we could draw and show you, but if I can, if I may.
And that's, that's, that's the other, you know, that's the problem I have with it, and the lights, I mean...
Here's a larger scale. So, as you can see, parking, aisle, parking, aisle.
Okay.
It exceeds the setback, that's your setback line.
That's outside the building, right?
That's outside. So now I'd have to push it in to get two aisles, I would lose an entire row. Again, not impossible, very inefficient, so we're...
Why not leave your bottom row there and still go another story?
Absolutely, you'd have to keep, that's my point. You, you just hit the nail on the head.
And putting the pool up on the roof.
Not impossible. We've already looked at it, we have to have two means of egress, as everybody knows and understands codes, so it's doable. We would have to raise the stair on both sides, just so everyone understands that, because you have to have two means, remote means of egress, and we would have to also change the height of the building. So again, these are all very doable things, and I agree with every one of them, but we're trying to keep the scale down and to keep it appropriate, so everything you're suggesting are very doable.
Well, the other way to go with this is have less apartments, and then you solve your issue. You solve your issue. If you have less apartments, you have adequate parking.
All, all suggestions, and we're willing to listen to everybody, but we understand that there's also a cost benefit to everything that gets done, so to be able to afford to sell a unit at a certain amount, there has to be a certain amount of units.
You know, I, I...
I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying.
Let me ask staff, no matter what we say here tonight, they have a legal right to build, am I correct?
Permitted as of right, five dwelling units. They're requesting the additional...
But they're in the NRO, the NRO's been...
The NRO, the NRO provides the opportunity, provides the opportunity to apply for bonus density under the conditional use process. That doesn't mean that, you know, you have to do, for conditional use approval, we have to look at these standards. We've looked at these standards, and because they are at six stories, when the normal residence can be three stories, the transition is not so dramatic as it would be if they went higher. Staff would have a, a bit more of a challenge of saying that it's more in concert with what the potential could be for the surrounding neighborhood, if it went higher than what it is.
I would say that one of the first things that happens to happen, one of the special conditions, would be opening up 130th Street to West Dixie Highway. That has to be...
We've already met with Public Works on that item, and we're already trying to get those wheels in motion.
That would have to be...
So keep going.
Landscape in the roof, putting the pool up on the roof.
I don't disagree with any one of them, don't disagree with the wall. I think those are all things that can be studied.
Excessive landscaping between those four houses on 120...
Right here.
Yeah.
No argument there. We could also work with staff, maybe, and I hate to use the V-word, the variance word, but we can also possibly look at pushing the wall in and changing our setback there a little bit to the parking, keeping the parking where it is, the distance to the wall there, and creating landscaping. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but there's certain things that could be looked at.
The parking, either decrease the apartments, or increase the height of the building and get the proper park, what was the amount of parking? Bob, what were you asking for on that?
The, the code, the city code is 1.5 unit, 1.5 parking spaces per, per residential unit.
67 units, so what would they give us?
And five, that's 101. And the guest parking, and by the way, that's quite, that's on the table, right? And then the guest parking is 5 percent, and I absolutely think that's on the table, but that brings you to 106...
Plus handicap.
Minimum parking spaces.
Plus handicap. I would have to also add handicap to that, to your, to your number.
And then four for handicap, well, that would actually put you at six for handicap, because you're over 100.
Right, absolutely. I'm not arguing that, that's, we would just have to make sure that's in the count.
And what are we getting in here now?
96 in total.
96, right. It's, it's certainly, I mean, all these items are good and can be looked at, I mean, lifts are good, and we're not against structured park, I want to make it very clear, we're not against structured parking. We're against making a nine-story building at this time, which may not be appropriate, but we're not against structured parking. If that's the trade-off we have to do, the owner would like to have two, two parking spaces for every unit. He would love to have that, trust me. As an architect...
And then the other alternative is either one or the other. This is what I would stipulate to you. Either you lower the amount of units you have in the building, or you increase the parking spaces to, what did we say, 116 at the bare minimum? 116, that's the bare minimum. It has to be 116, or, that's, that's up to you, you're the architect.
112.
How many, I'm sorry, Deb.
112, including handicapped.
Including the handicap?
Handicapped is one per every 25 spaces.
But you said over 100, you had to add two more, didn't you?
Well, now, but you crossed the 100, 97 units, 96 parking spaces, you're below the 100. Once you cross 100, you've got to put more on.
So then you would, so what's, where are we at, how many do we have?
We're 20, we're about 22 spaces off right now.
We're what?
We're about 22 spaces off, off of your number right now?
I couldn't go along with that unless, it's a stipulate that we have to have adequate now.
Yeah, I think, I think we're 118 minus 96.
We have to have 112 spots.
That's the number I'm coming up with.
They have, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, they have to meet parking to get DRC approval, no matter what.
We, we meet parking right now.
They currently meet parking as it stands, because they're taking advantage of, as Mr. Pashon noted, that there are some reduction standards that are currently in the parking code.
That's not an entitlement, though, is it? That's a, that's a request?
They, it's an, it's an option for the applicant to do. It's available to every applicant that comes into City Hall.
Then I'm back to, well, I'll come back to that.
So the code allows this to occur, is what I'm saying, the point making.
Yeah, we gotta look at that, that doesn't...
And we haven't touched the parking code in considerable amount of time, as far as I understand.
We will shoot.
And it requires, it does require some specific studies to justify changes to your parking.
So, can, okay.
So, so where are we at? Just so we understand this, we're not against looking at the site plan, studying this, it is to our benefit, the owner's benefit, to try to get to 120 spaces, 122, whatever that number is. We are not against that, I want to make that very clear. Lifts, second structured parking, rearranging some tandems, whatever, whenever we need to look at, we're not against that. We're trying to do the best product. One of our goals, number one, is not to build a nine-story building. We started out as a nine-story building, we've been pairing it down. Another goal of ours is that, that buffer, that setback, that Ms. Love keeps talking about, it's, it's important to us. You know, would we, we forego that, to add parking? Yeah, if we had to, but I think if we show you the study on that, and you saw what that looked like, there might, people wouldn't be so quick to rush to the parking, structured parking, if you saw that. But we're absolutely willing to look at that. The inefficiency of it unfortunately forces us two to three levels. It's just, it's just the way the code works. Speed ramps are not efficient, and, and the park double, two-way parking in and out. It also would change the underside of it a little bit, because now you have speed ramps, and you have, you would have these ramps, entrances here, and you'd have speed ramps as well, so you wouldn't have as much access to the drop-off. Not impossible, but it would certainly, right now, we were trying for a very clean look. I know, I know it's hard done, believe me, we were trying to get an access here, an access here, and access here. For a one-acre lot to have three access points, I'm proud of that. It's something we worked very hard, and we met with Public Works at least two or three times, and we have a study done on it, so I'm happy with that. I would be happier if I could pull this off and get 120 parking spaces, and trust me, we've worked this thing to death. We already have this ready for DRC, we haven't submitted, so when I, somebody said earlier that they thought this was fake, or fictitious, or whatever, this parking works, it meets code, we've met with fire. So, could I throw some more parking spaces? Do you make you all happy? Yeah, I could probably put one here, I could probably throw one here, and throw some more spaces in here, but I'm going to get shot down at DRC. That's not my goal. My goal is to give you a realistic plan, even though I'm not required here today to give you a real site plan. We came here with a site plan that's been vetted by the fire department, by Public Works, and by some of your staff. Did it make you happy on the numbers? No, you don't like the numbers, I don't like the numbers, and trust me, we're trying. I'm proud of the fact that we got rid of over 20 tandem spaces and added six spaces. That's an accomplishment. We're going to keep at it, guys, that's all I can tell you is we're going to keep at it. We want to make, we want to make everybody happy. I know it doesn't sound like it, we truly want to try to make everybody happy, and it's just not possible, so.
Can I remember one, since Kenny was talking about some things to be added in case this thing goes through, and this lets you off the hook, I don't think you're a part of this one, but this is a, this is a condominium project, and it's not rental units.
Correct.
What happens in many condominium projects is people jump on Airbnb, or some other opportunity. In our city, in a residential neighborhood, and this is our two, short-term rentals are not allowed.
Right, right.
Now, this will be the first multifamily project inside of a residential neighborhood, so there needs to be an absolute prohibition against rentals on the property, because it violates city code. So the, and whoever is responsible for the, the residents that live there, it's got to be in their condo docks, it's got to be part of your agreement, so that if this thing never worked out, it can, it can't turn into apartments, or certainly in a way for short-term rental.
Good point. Can we do that?
Let me just say very briefly, Mr. Pashon, as somebody who has made a career of being a defender of home rule, that is absolutely something that I think the city should have the right to do, and we certainly have no objection to that. If you want to go to the city and make sure that this city's ordinance to prohibit that is strong and in place, and that'll provide some comfort to the residents, that this is not going to be some short-term rental Airbnb turnover.
The city ordinance does prohibit that, but this will be the first anomaly with a multifamily unit sitting inside of a dedicated residential neighborhood.
I'm only saying that by the time this moves forward, by the time we get to DRC, by the time we get to construction, by the time we have final approval of site plan, there is ample time, whether it arises from this commission, whether it's something just that you bring to the city council directly, or from you to the city council, there's more than enough time to adopt some kind of a city ordinance that speaks to that. Now, there's, you know, some hostility in some places in this state to letting cities make those decisions. I happen to be a believer in home rule, and something that prohibited short-term rentals, if it was anti-Airbnb, or anti-VRBO, or whatever those other things are, we have no issue with that, we have no problem, and you've got plenty of time to get the city council to adopt an ordinance that speaks to that before we're putting the first shovel in the ground.
Would you stipulate to that on this project?
I just did.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, as far as the council adopting an ordinance, if that's what you're saying...
We already have, we already have a prohibition on short-term rentals.
Sorry?
We already have a prohibition on short-term rentals.
Well, no, the prohibition...
But what you're asking is...
See, prohibition currently exists. Short-term rentals are not allowed in residential neighborhoods.
Exactly, that's what he's talking about.
And that currently exists, but in residential neighborhoods, what you have, except for this, is residences, and this multifamily residence is the anomaly, it's the outlier. So just to make sure that everybody's singing from the same hymnal, we need to include all of that inside of the city ordinance.
We're not opposed...
We're not changing the ordinance, we're just having to include it because of the uniqueness of the overlay district that allows this to take place.
Where, let me, so I'm clear in regard to what Commissioner Reach said, as well as you, Mr. Pashon? We have no issue with the existing ordinance, or clarifying it further, Ms. Love's telling us that there's something in place, but if, if you think it should be stronger, I mean, we don't want to be the only project singled out, but we don't have an issue with something that says that this can't be turned into some kind of pseudo-hotel, or something.
Exactly.
Now, obviously, people, people rent sometimes on a long-term basis, but whatever your ordinance is, we're happy to comply with that, we're happy to support it.
Well, I think Bob hit it right on the head. These people are concerned with that becoming just a rental.
Yeah.
Now, if you had good people moving in, buying a place, and they're going to stay there, that's what we want to stipulate to. We don't want this to become a rental.
Neither do we.
And I...
That, that would not support what we're trying to do.
That's a big comfort.
Yeah, well, I mean, listen, as far as there being an ordinance that prohibits short-term rentals, you know, sometimes people lease a place, and, you know, they live there for 10 years, and they have a good relationship with their landlord, and they're stable, and that's, that's where they live, but, you know, we're, we have no problem with regulating short-term rentals either, you know, I leave it to Ms. Love to explain your current ordinance, but if there was something that would be stronger with that, you know, I, I want to go back to what the chairman said. These people, my clients want to do more projects, and it's not an accident, Chair Seifried, that, you know, you're hearing accommodation from us. We don't want to be adversary, we don't want to be bad neighbors, we want to be good neighbors, we want the people in the community to feel that, you know, this was something that was at least not as bad as they were, were afraid it was going to be, at least that, at least that. Thank you.
Mr. Pashon, if I may, Mr. Chair, again, your short-term rental ordinance has, is in effect. It is, if you touch your short-term rental ordinance, you've, any change, you know that, sir.
Absolutely understand.
However, we could, as Kent pointed out, we're going to do this on another project, you could have a restrictive covenant as part of your development approval, stating, putting some conditions on this particular development.
Well, and the condition would only be that they apply, they, they comply with the existing ordinance, because they are in a residential district, and that's the, that's the wording of our ordinance.
Right, but if you wanted to, even say you don't want it to be able to turn into any type of rentals, I don't know what the city's attorneys say about that, but that could also be part of going into a restrictive covenant.
Okay, we'll put that in there.
But you have to approach a bit carefully. What you, what you want to ban is, is the B&B business, but you, you can't technically prohibit a property owner who buys it from renting, from not living there and renting the unit out to someone else.
And that's why I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
That's a, that's a dicey issue.
I would say without rendering an opinion on that, we can say that that doesn't have to be decided here, because what I'm hearing is that you're concerned about it becoming a center for short-term rentals, not longer-term rentals.
I think what we, no, what I, what I think that people out here would want to see and feel a lot more comfortable with is that people are actually buying this and living there, and going to stay there. Now, I mean, that, that, that's, that's...
I'll add a couple of things. Most condo documents nowadays, because it's become a problem, do restrict short-term rentals and prohibit them even beyond and above what the code might do.
Okay, so, why, okay.
But I think the city would want to limit itself to what is in its code.
Why don't we add, why don't we add a covenant to this, and, and say that it's not, not going to be rentals, but, but it has to be owned individually? I mean, I'd feel a lot safer with that, before I...
I think the attorneys should weigh in on the issue of prohibiting any sort of rental. I think that's the big question. Short-term rental is one thing, because we have an ordinance supporting that.
Right, I know that.
So I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
So, when it comes to short-term rentals, I actually think the proper mechanism and the best way to facilitate it would actually be imposing a condition, if you were to approve the conditional use permit tonight, to add the condition that there is a prohibition on short-term rentals added into the condo docks when that time comes. We do have an ordinance on the books, but because the intent of that ordinance is really applicable to single-family dwelling units located in a residential zoning district, and as Commissioner Pachone eloquently put it, this is an anomaly in that it's going to be a multi, multifamily project, but located in a residential zone. So the city would be comfortable with that added restriction if, if the commissioners were ready to add that. However, as to the second request, as to restricting the units as far as rental outright, I, I just don't see, I, I just don't see that being a legally defensible position. I, I think that there is certain owners... I, I just don't see that being a legally defensible position. I, I think that there is certain ownership rights, and when somebody owns a unit, a home, a townhouse, they do have a legal right to, to ownership, and part of that is rentals. As, as long as it's something not banned, and, and certainly any resident here that has a single-family home as of right can enter into a long-term lease. I, I just, the city just does not feel that that's a, a good public policy to be setting forth as far as a condition, but we would be in favor of the short-term rental prohibition as a condition added to the CUP.
You brought up a point before that the condo documents can put that in there, correct?
Correct.
Generally, they have-
All right, then, then would you stipulate to that, that you'll put that in the condo documents?
If the question is, are we willing to agree what, to what the city attorney just said, to a condition that we agree that the terms of the current city ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals be included in the condo documents, the answer is yes.
And that's section five dash sixteen-ten of the city code.
All right, that's, would seem to settle that issue.
Okay, so what did I bring up?
What's next?
Condo documents prohibit short-term, lush landscaping, pool, roof garden, landscaping on both sides, opening up One Hundred and Thirty Street to Dixie Highway. What else do you, you have, Kevin?
That was, that fairly well covers it. The architect has already stipulated that each unit will have a washer and dryer. That's extremely important. We don't want to recreate what we've got on Sixth Avenue.
The other thing, adequate parking.
Yeah, parking is the big stickler.
That, that's, that's it. We either reduce the amount of units or we need a minimum of one hundred and sixteen. Am I correct on that number?
That seems to be where we're going.
I believe Ms. Love said earlier the number's one-twelve, not one-sixteen.
Which is it then? One-twelve? Okay, one-twelve, minimum of one-twelve.
See, that, that is the core problem. If, if, if they gave up half a floor of apartments, or one floor, put the pool on top, get a nice rooftop garden, with high-end furnishings, the, the remaining units would have very positive value appreciation. And you would be able to bring your parking more in line with, with the realities. So we, we kind of have this, this quandary now on how to address this because you've got to have a place for visitor parking, and you've got to have staff parking because there is no municipal parking lot or garage that can support the project, and we can't expect single-family residences to support the parking. That, it's not gonna work. And, uh, the, the difficulty is we are compelled under the, uh, the rules of these hearings and processes to vote on this request for bonus units because the LDRs permit this.
Can we reduce the request?
That's an interesting issue. Does the commission have the right, and this is kind of splitting hairs here, they're asking for-
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two bonus units. Does the commission have the right to, to approve a lesser grant? Or are we locked into that number?
Ms. Love is stating the code says up to, I think you should base your decision on whether they meet the criteria in the code and the factors you're allowed to consider when determining whether to approve the bonus. But you can certainly make recommendations.
Remember, it does not say thou shalt give ninety dwelling units per acre. It says you have, you can get up to based upon certain criteria. Now, they've met each of these criteria. As far as what they're proposing to do, every one of those dwelling units has a, you do this, you get this number, you do that, you get this number. Those are the things that they're proposing, which matches here. Now, I'm not talking about community character or any of the conditional use approvals. I'm not discussing that. I'm talking about what this table and the LDRs say. For example, if you have, um, I'm gonna use, I'm gonna pick one. If you include public art in your project, you get an additional eight dwelling units per acre. So it has nothing to do with community character, nothing to do with that. The conditional use approval is what grants that. So they meant, they selected what our NRO provides, certain, uh-
But if you can't support, my, my, my point is if you can't support the units, it doesn't say anything about parking, but then you've got a number that you can't support with parking. Because you just can't fit them on the project, and this guy's been killing himself trying to-
Right.
Since we met back last year.
And he is actually meeting what the code allows him to do. So again, he can get parking reductions based upon certain things that he does, which is what they are proposing and why they are, meet the parking requirements now. Is through those parking reductions that our code allows them to elect, to do. And we can't say, oh, no, 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 you can't do that. Our codes, our code says if you provide five bicycle spaces, you can reduce your parking by one parking space. If you provide ten percent of your parking is assigned to alternative vehicles such as hybrid or electric cars, as long as ten percent of that parking is dedicated to that, you can reduce your overall parking by ten percent. So there are things in our code that allows applicants to elect to do that we as approvers, we don't have flexibility to say, I'm sorry, you can't do that.
Then why are we here?
You, at the end of the day, sir, you, at the end of the day-
I would ask a question. What have we been doing since seven-thirty?
Yes.
If that's-
And that's what I'm, that, all I can tell you is that we go by what the conditional use, what, now, you're talking parking. I've told you right at the get-go that they met the parking requirements established in the code. You're all saying, and the community has said, they're really concerned that there'll be overflow parking going into the community. I don't have control over that. I have control over, do they meet the code? And yes, they do, based upon the parking allowances we have in the code now. Now, at some point, as we talked to Ms. Pichon, is that the city may want to revisit those things in the future through parking analyses to justify what you're allowing and what you're not allowing. And you could say, I do not, I'd like to have all those parking allowances taken out of the code. But right now, we're dealing with what the code allows the applicant, or any applicant, to do. It's not specific to this project, but it is applied to this project, as well as any other project that comes into the city. And that's the conundrum that you all are facing. You're facing a project that does meet the parking requirements. They are trying to go over and above what they are required to do by code.
All right, do any of our commissioners have further questions for staff? All right, and the chair needs to call the question. Chair calls for a motion, either-
I, I move we call the question.
All right. In this case, who supports this? You do?
Yeah, based on what staff's criteria and everything is presented, I mean, oh. Sorry, based on the staff report, I mean, you know. We try here on the board to, to obviously do our best to, to listen to the community. It is important to us, we're part of the community. None of us are paid, none of us are elected, we're here voluntarily. We try our best to give our professional opinion, some of us professional opinions, or we do our best to use our experience with certain subject matters to, to, to make these very, very difficult decisions. And I know sometimes people look at zoning maps and they just see a bunch of colors, you know, and sometimes things, you know, don't end up exactly the way everyone wants. Uh, but we do have to recognize the realities of how population growth, how, you know, we have these studies that we prepare that are telling us and telling us, hey, this has to happen in these certain areas. And unfortunately, you know, some of us live in those areas, in those transitional areas, and this happens to be one. And this is definitely not an easy application. Everyone has invested a lot of time, some more than others, but, you know, I have a hard time seeing where the applicant has not met the criteria that we, well, not we, but that the code says they need to meet in order to move forward with their project. And, you know, there's many things that I, I do not like. I could say very clearly with the site plan, but this isn't the DRC, you know, and that's really staff's, we rely on staff support when that time comes to review those items. And sometimes, you know, applicants, I've seen it where applicants ask for one thing on the conditional use, and they realize that there's so many physical limitations or just other criterias that they can't meet, and they won't be able to cap out on the sixty-two. Um, but really, as I see this presented to us, I'm having a hard time seeing where the applicant hasn't met the criteria that's been presented in front of us, and I have to, you know, make a motion to approve the project.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Jason James. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to approve. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nope.
All right, motion carries three to one. That is only a recommendation. What's the next step for them?
What will happen next is they will develop what's called a precise plan, having all the parameters. And one thing I really think that Jason pointed out that, that we did in a staff, and I apologize for not doing that, is indeed, a lot of times they'll come in and say they want eighty dwelling units. And then when they figure out DRC has said, you need to do this, you need to do that, you need to do that, then they can't use all of those because they cannot fit them. And the parking may, as you're trying, as they're trying to serve the public and serve the community by increasing parking, it may not be that they can achieve that. But we as staff will definitely inform them of what we're going to try to push and promote. What you're saying up here is, in addition to the code, we're going to try to encourage them to achieve better design, more landscaping, additional buffering, and maximize the parking to the greatest extent practical.
Perhaps fewer units to compromise on that.
And we did amplify the-
I'm sorry.
Pool on the roof, landscape roof.
Yes, sir. We've written those down. So when we take a look at those, we'll be working closely with the applicant through the DRC process. That's the next step. Once they get through the DRC process, which is quite rigorous, believe me, then they have to apply for building permits within a certain period of time.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
But the next step is that this has to go to city council for the approval of your, of the final resolution. So this is not, this is only advisory or recommendation. They now have to take this request to city council. And if it is approved, then we do the DRC process.
Mr. Chair. And I don't know how we, we put it into this, but what I would want to consider is with the parking, again, we have, the residents of the building don't have one-point-five parking spaces. Three-quarters of the residents have closer to one-point-two-five parking spaces because of the shared parking, because of the tandem parking. Those parking spaces are not available to the residents of the building. They're available to twenty-six units. And I think it makes, it makes the total an inadequate number. If you put, if you put sixty tandem parking spaces in, then everybody else would have no parking. Right? Because all the cars would be taking up in the, in the tandem parking spaces.
Well, you would have, you would have sixty, you would have a hundred and twenty cars.
That's the point with the problem with, that I have with tandem. It manipulates the total.
Well, you know, Bob, I see homeowners, one car behind the other, in, in the driveway. Wouldn't that be the same thing as tandem? I mean, or townhouses, I'll see one car behind the other.
It is true that in a lot of the residential areas, you have that.
You don't have, you don't have sixty, how many bedrooms are in this place?
No, no, I, I get where you're going, and you hit the button on the head. We gotta go back to this.
Would you, because your, tandem parking is, is a weird element to the number of parking spaces.
Bob, what you brought up last week about the bonuses.
I disagree with that.
And, and I think, I think it's time that we take a look at the bonuses and change it. I mean, like we talked about narrowing the footprint, the rooftop gardens, all of that stuff is important, and I, I think that's where we should go to. I, I agree.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the board for its very detailed, thorough, and extensive consideration. We appreciate that. We pledge to be back, continuing to work with you to make this a better project. And I would like to just take one second and say to every neighbor out here that no matter- Sir, that's uncalled for. I haven't been rude to you. I haven't expressed any rudeness to you whatsoever. I do want to take the opportunity to say to every neighbor out here that we are very serious. We are very happy to continue to listen to what anyone has to say. You wish to contact us, you wish us to contact you. We can't promise you're gonna like it, but we can promise that we're gonna listen. We can promise that we're gonna continue to hear anything anybody has to say. You can shake your head or smile as much as you want, but I know in saying it that I mean it. And if you have some suggestion you'd like to make or something that makes this more palatable to you, please contact us. We're happy to listen to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Geller.
Okay, do we get a, good luck.
Yeah, all right, now we move into PC one-eighteen. Item five, our next public hearing. This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving an application for a conditional use permit in substantially the attached form allocating one-hundred-and-seventy-five residential units from the primary pool of two-thousand-five-hundred of floating residential units and fifty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet from the pool of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet for non-residential use reserved for use within the neighborhood redevelopment overlay in our O district for a proposed mixed-use development featuring a seven-story, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-unit senior residential apartment building with retail space, a six-story, seventy-bed adult living facility, ALF, and a three-level parking garage on the one-point-nine-five-acre real property generally located at nine-fifty Northeast One Hundred Twenty-Fourth Street and specifically identified with Miami-Dade County Folio Number zero-six-dash-two-two-three-zero dash zero-four-zero dash zero-zero-two-zero in accordance with Article Four, Division Four, Section four-dash-two-zero-five, Perin B, and Section four-dash-three-zero-five, and Article Three, Division Four, Sections three-dash-four-zero-two through three-dash-four-zero-seven of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-nine, entitled Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and for all of the purposes. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission Chair and Planning Commission members and the members of the audience. My name is Kent Wally, a planner for the city of North Miami. I'll be presenting the staff report summary today for the conditional use permit application for the nine-fifty Northeast One Hundred Twenty-Fourth Street mixed-use project. The applicant is NM One Hundred Twenty-Four LLC, and their representatives are in attendance tonight. The applicant is requesting one-hundred-and-seventy-five dwelling units and fifty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet for non-residential square footage from the NRO to build a seven-storied- to build a seven-story, one hundred and seventy-five-unit, fifty-five and up senior and affordable workforce apartment building with ground level retail, which includes a Mocha artist gallery, as well as a six-story adult living facility and a three-story standalone parking garage. More specifically, the apartment that is proposed will have a mix of income, um, apartment units. Eighty-five percent of the units will be allocated for mixed-income seniors to allow for a range of housing options from affordable to market rate. The other remaining fifteen percent will be allocated for affordable workforce housing. To clarify affordable workforce housing, I will mention the definition here in Chapter seven of the LDR. Affordable workforce housing is defined, a household comprised of one or more persons, one of which is an essential service personnel comprised of teachers, educators, artists, creative professionals, school district, community college, university employees, law enforcement personnel, fire and rescue personnel, healthcare personnel, pers- persons employed by business essential to the county's economic and the county's local government personnel, utility personnel, information technology personnel, childcare personnel, skilled trades, and other employed positions that are provided by the government and municipal services essential to maintaining a high quality of life in and for the city of North Miami. Some of the project features include the affordable slash workforce housing component, lead green design, mixed use, underground utilities, rooftop amenities that include a pool and a garden, rooftop garden, and public art. Uh, some of the general background of the site is, the site is located on nine fifty northeast one twenty-fourth street. It's currently a one point nine-five acre underutilized parking lot. The future land use designation is community facility. The zoning, the current zoning is public use. However, the, the property is located within the NRO, which allows for mixed use. As you can recall, the NRO has twenty-five hundred available residential dwelling units, available for the NRO for bonus density, and seven thou- seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet allocated for non-residential square foot usage. The allocation of bonus density requires a conditional use permit, which is to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by the city council. Site plan approval by DRC and city council would follow the DRC, I mean, the CUP process. Staff has reviewed the CUP application to be in compliance with Article Three, Division Four, Section three dash four five for the standards for approving conditional uses. The following are conditions that were met for approval. Um, what we looked at for one of the conditions to see if the project was consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies for the future land use element for the NRO. We determined that the project has met the floating density units policies and intent with the vision of the NRO to promote more density and intensity and mixed use within the NRO. The proposed project also meets the housing element, providing an ALF in mixed-used areas within the NRO, meeting the senior housing need, providing affordable slash workforce housing, providing housing to varying incomes for senior to workforce, uh, people, and providing sustainable green design for affordable housing. Um, the proposed project also meets the, uh, economic element goals and policies, as well as provides, uh, the applicant provided a economic impact analysis, which was reviewed. And the project is proposed to create approximately two hundred and forty short-term construction jobs, approximately fourteen million in short-term construction wages, approximately two million in permit and impact fees, and approximately a hundred direct and indirect full-time jobs with more than six million in wages and benefits. The pro- the proposed project will also generate one million in ad valorem taxes with an additional hundred and sixty thousand in sales tax collections. The proposed project, um, was also reviewed for concurrency. A utility impact analysis was provided to staff. The public works department reviewed and determined that the water and sewer, water supply, wastewater disposal, stormwater management met the concurrency requirements. And the development also meet the minimum parking requirements listed in the LDR. And the shared parking analysis was reviewed by the city's independent traffic consultant and reviewed that the parking met the requirements. The property is located at the corner of, like I said, northeast one twenty-fourth street, northeast tenth, and northeast one twenty-third. Those adjacent streets have a current level of service of C. The traffic impact study provided by the applicant indicated that the proposed development will generate a minimal increase of net trips and will therefore not degrade the current acceptable level of service of C, which is on the adjacent roads. Our independent traffic consultant, Kittleson, reviewed the traffic study and confirmed that it was in compliance. The proposed development is in compliance with the NRO regulations, which, um, has the vision for increased density and intensity. The conceptual plan shows, um, showed that it adheres to the transitional standards, um, provided for the NRO that's located within the L, LDR. And if the CUP was approved by council, a, uh, well, by the planning commission, a more precise, detailed plan would be required to be provided to DRC so that it complied with all the components of the LDR. The subject site, um, as I mentioned where it was located, the, there is commercial development to the north, multifamily development in the built environment to the west and south. And to the east of it is a public use, um, nursing home, Villa Maria, which is to the east. There is a single-family development that is a block away to the southeast portion. And is the term, and it has been determined that the proposed development is compatible with the adjacent surrounding uses. The concept plan shows streetscaping, pedestrian paths, transit-oriented development design, and urban design to help further the transition with the public realm and adjacent residential uses. The current property, as I mentioned, is underutilized parking lot, which has currently been used for illegal dumping, which is a negative, which has a negative impact on public health, safety, and welfare. The pro- the proposed development does not have an adverse impact on the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Therefore, the new development will provide a usable use and provide economic and housing benefits that were mentioned earlier on for the community. The proposed development will further the community's vision of the NRO. As I mentioned, that provides more higher density and mixed use within the NRO. And it provides more sustainable green building design. And it also would meet the transitional requirements. In order to propose, in order to ensure that the proposed development is designed according to what has been presented, staff is recommending that the mayor and council require a restricted record, a, uh, restricted covenant to ensure that the uses remain intact, that the mix of senior and affordable workforce housing, that component remain, that ratio remains intact, and that the parking calculations for the provided uses remain intact. In conclusion, staff is recommending the CUP application with conditions for approval to the Planning Commission to recommend approval to the mayor and city council. The following conditions, um, that are in the, um, conditional use permit that the staff is recommending are that the bonus density meets all the allocated features listed in the table that's in your letter of intent and also in the plans for bonus density, um, that they're applying for the maximum ninety dwelling units per acre. That the applicant submit, if, if the conditional use permit was approved, that they apply for DRC within a year of the approval. That they record the restrictive covenant, the draft is in your planning commission packet. And also that they apply for building permits within eighteen months of the CUP approval. Also, they would have to meet during the DRC process and the permit process, they would have to meet all the review requirements of public works, the police department, the fire department, and all state and county agencies. They would also have to obtain a certificate of occupancy, certificate of use. And then they would have to submit a shared, the, uh, parking agreement, a shared parking agreement that would be reviewed by city staff. This concludes my staff report summary. Um, I will turn it over to the applicant's team for further review and to present the project. I'll be available if you have any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wally.
Good evening, my name is John Delagloria. My office is at ten sixty-five northeast one twenty-fifth street. I want to start out by saying I mean no disrespect by wearing my hat. I had surgery yesterday, and it is now official, I have a hole in my head. So...
You know, that's been rumored for many, many years, John, and, and I, I, I commend you for finally acknowledging that.
It is because, it is because of my undying respect for you that I handed you that line.
Thank you, John, thank you. You know, I've waited years to have you hand me a good line.
Okay, all right. So, uh, you're gonna approve it and I can sit down. As, as has been presented earlier this evening, all you're doing tonight is making a recommendation. You're not approving the, um, CUP. And in fact, the only real technical issue in front of you is the, uh, bonus density. Of course, um, you've heard from your staff, and we meet all the requirements. Oh, um, before I forget, um, a developer, um, Jorge Savlof is here along with Mr. Vargas and, and Marcus Frankel, who will be taking you through the design of the project, which I know that, um, board member each has already spoken nicely of this evening. Um, this project, I hope you recognize, is rather different than the two hours you just spent. Um, as far as design, as far as your parking concerns, they're completely met. And as far as the specific use, I'm sure you recognize that your comprehensive plan has actually singled out this specific use here, which is for senior housing. I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna say something, Commissioner. Okay, um, again, I don't need to go into a whole lot of, of explanation. Um, we are very fortunate to have Marcus Frankel as our architect. And as far as the developer goes, by the way, I know a lot of people think, you know, developers like come and go, they make their money, and they get out of town. Um, the, uh, Blue Road Development, uh, currently has thirteen hotels on Miami Beach, is now moving into the North Miami community, and this is not gonna be the only project they build in this city. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Marcus, and then of course, I'll be around, Marcus will be around for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a handheld mic available?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you mind if I locate the, the boards together?
Um, I'm, I'm fine with that, however, the, the, uh...
How can we do this?
I can't hear you well. Yeah, well, on the wrong side of the cameras for that.
Oh.
Well, yeah, but it, it can't hit the boards.
Yeah, this doesn't work?
Well, she's working it, uh... Yeah, unfortunately, the camera's only gonna be able to hit one board at a time, so... There, now that's a good shot of that board. And that one you can, yeah, and then she can swing over for the other one. All right, so now we can get, uh, camera views for the benefit of the public.
I trust that you have the same drawings in front of you that we're, as, as we're talking, that we're displaying there. I'll only go up to them if you have specific questions. Uh, I'd like to start out just some general points about the project and about the city and the process. And as John mentioned, our principal developer, George Savlof, is here from Blue, Blue Road Developers and Trees Development, which is the name of the developing entity of this. And his partner, Marcelo Tennebaum, has attended many, many meetings, uh, design meetings with staff and with us over the last two years. And so has the other partner named Mo, Mo Yagubi from Upper Manhattan Development Corp., who's a partner in the housing project, in the whole project. Uh, as, as, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, Marcus Frankel, eleven sixty-six Kane Concourse, Bay Harbor Island, that's where our office is. We practiced architecture and planning for many years, and we represent the, the owners that I mentioned. I also, like you, have spent many years on boards and committees. I was in your first design review committee in, uh, North Miami with Joanne Martin in the, in the nineties. She appointed me to that committee, and I served for a couple of years there. Uh, recently, I was four years the Planning and Zoning Board in Bay Harbor Island. And I resigned recently because we were just doing an awful lot of work in Bay Harbor. And I've been on many boards in City Miami Beach, energy boards, environmental boards, environmental boards in Bay Harbor, et cetera. So I understand the sensitivities you all deal with, and I dealt with them and still deal with them in private practice. I want to compliment your planners. We had many meetings with Tanya, uh, Wilson Sejour, and of course, Nixon LeBron, and, and more recently with Kent Wally, and we had other planners that are no longer with you. We had meetings over the years. We participated in the process when you, uh, went through the LDRs, which were very important, and, and you, you were very committed to that process. And we spent many long nights here with you on that. And we think that it wa- it was a very good process because you were committed to, uh, the process of making sure that mixed-use development would come to North Miami, in particular, in the NRO district of your downtown cultural arts district, which is exactly where this is. So you were committed to that, and now you have it. Hopefully, you'll have our project. We also had neighborhood meetings. We invited the neighbors twice in the end, uh, I believe it was two thousand sixteen and then middle of two thousand seventeen. We had meetings for the, for the neighbors. We had twenty, thirty, forty people there sometimes, and they were always at the, uh, Gwen Margola Center. We advertised those meetings, and many people came, and they gave us a lot of good input, which we responded to. So this is a project that really, the time has come for this project. The result of your planning efforts and us working with your planners and the fact that you've adopted the NRO, your council has, and you've adopted the LDRs, has resulted in a better project that we're now showing you today. And it reflects, it will reflect the much-needed vitality of your downtown area. You'll have one hundred and seventy-five apartments for seniors, and seniors is, it's fifty-five and older, which seems to be getting younger every year, but that's seniors. I may live there one day, hopefully, if I'm not too old. So we think that the project is, will have vitality, will have security, daytime and nighttime. It also has an, an ALF facility for the elderly on one corner of the project. That's the corner of Tenth Avenue and northeast one twenty-third street, which will have sixty, uh, beds, uh, seventy beds in that facility. It'll have a therapy center there on the ground level, and it'll have a rooftop therapy gardens, which I'll talk about in a minute, on the rooftop, just for that building. So the, the project will accommodate many diverse functions and important functions, including retail, which I'll talk about. It'll have, it'll be very engaging, it'll be colorful, and it will be artistic. Okay, as the staff report pointed out, I want to just reiterate a few of them. The development concept, it plans, and all the data that we submit and all the reports we submitted were very responsive to the city's criteria and to the real-life needs of new residential, uh, residences in the downtown area. By the way, this is the first residential project in your downtown area in fifty years, fifty. It's pretty interesting, I, I just read that in the staff report. And like much, many of the cities in the U.S., downtown areas, cultural areas, and in North Miami, we need, uh, they're providing for affordable housing, and they're providing housing for seniors and for the elderly. So in that regard, we're following the trend, so to speak. It responds to the need for one hundred and seventy-five units for seniors, a community health facility, as I mentioned, sixty beds, seventy beds, uh, and retail at the ground level on northeast one hundred and twenty-fourth street. It's about ninety-two hundred square feet of retail, and in that, we designated eighteen hundred feet as a Mocha outreach space. And we met with Mocha directors many times over the years, too. As you know, the directors have changed, but we met with them, and they were very appreciative of the fact that this would provide connection from this site, your downtown site, directly to Mocha along one twenty-fourth street. And they thought it'd be a great place to have some space for ga- artists, galleries... for artists, galleries, studios, and even education. So we're designating right now at least the eighteen hundred feet. And it's on your site plan there, and it's clearly called out for the Mocha outreach. The other important item, as mentioned in the staff report, is that it responds to the needs of upgrading and enhancing your right-ofways, your three main streets, Northeast 124th, Northeast 10th Avenue, Cross and Villa Maria Nursing Home and Rehab Hospital, and, of course, on Northeast 123rd Street. So we're designating those as pedestrian plazas, and they're very wide and broad, and they have wayfinding signage, which is one of the features of your LDRs. And they connect to the buildings that sit behind them as well as to the, the public having these broad pedestrian plazas and landscaping all the way around the property. We're saving nine of the street trees that are there today. They're very large oaks and a couple of black olives. And they're all there, and we're going to keep those nine. And we're enhancing the streetscape with a tremendous amount of landscaping. Approximately sixty-five trees will be added to the perimeter, perimeters around the buildings. All, mostly Florida native and Florida-friendly trees and ziriscape-type planting. And we have a very good landscape architect. He couldn't make it tonight, but his office is a block or two from here. Savino and Miller, Barry Miller, on Northeast 6th Avenue. And he's making sure that we save as many of those, all of the trees on the perimeter that we could, and that we're enhancing with hardscape, landscape, and artifacts all around those pedestrian ways. You can see them pretty clearly in the renderings that are in your packets and the one rendering that's up on the board.
What do you define as an artifact?